Our guest today, President Tony Preckwinkle of the Cook County Board of Commissioners, is the 35th president of that body, an office she has held since 2010. She is the first Black woman to be elected to the office. And she, her watchwords have been fiscal responsibility, transparency, and improved services for all in Cook County. As the top exec in Cook County, which is the nation's second-largest county, President Preckwinkle oversees one of the nation's largest public health and hospital systems, as we know, and also one of the nation's largest criminal justice systems. On that note, President Preckwinkle has made it a huge priority and has been very committed to reimagining, reinventing, transforming the criminal justice system here in the county and recognizing that an approach beyond the usual is really needed. And so has been addressing mental health issues, substance abuse, and addiction as illnesses to be treated, not crimes to be punished. And I think we all know about the bond reform and other things that have been accomplished. Economic footprint of the Chicago region is larger, now think about this for a minute, it's larger than many nations in the world. So we're really here at the center of economic activity for the state and for the region. And it's not just the city of Chicago, but the county of Cook and its neighbors as well. Promoting equity, specifically racial equity, has been a central principle of President Preckwinkle's time in office. And I think it was November of 18, the president released the Cook County Policy Roadmap, a five-year strategic plan for all the offices under the president to guide policy and equity work. Now, if that's not enough, President Preckwinkle is also the president of Forest Preserve Districts of Cook County, which is one of the largest and oldest forest preserve districts in the United States, what used to be called the Emerald Necklace around Cook County. Before serving as president of the Cook County Board, President Preckwinkle was alderman of the 4th Ward on the city's great south side for 19 years. And prior to being an elected official, she was a high school history teacher. So yay for our teachers. Here, here is right. They have a very big job, a very important job, and we need to always remember that. So without further ado, I introduce to you now the president of the Cook County Board of Commissioners, Tony Preckwinkle.
I want to thank Anne Marie for that kind introduction. She's a very old friend, and I'm grateful that she is with us today. So thank you. After two very challenging years apart, I'm glad to be back in person with all of you at the City Club. I'm grateful to see each and every one of you today. Let me be clear, we're able to be here in large part because vaccines and masks have A little bit of science to start here. As you know, Cook County Health serves everyone, regardless of their ability to pay, and they've cared for tens of thousands of Cook County COVID-19 survivors. The work being done at Stroger and Provenant, as well as the Cook County Department of Public Health, especially since the start of this pandemic, is the work of angels. While we're certainly not out of the woods yet, I'm immensely grateful for the good work of our health system, our doctors, nurses, and first responders to provide lifesaving care to residents during these very challenging last two years. I'm also thankful to have a president of the United States who's championed critical legislation so our country can recover from the pandemic now and in the years ahead. President Biden has demonstrated that he has the temperament, leadership, and moral compass to navigate the crisis unfolding before our very eyes in the Ukraine. And before I go any further, let me say this, this brazen attack by Putin on democracy was unprovoked. It was reckless. It threatens the world order and world peace as we know it. We stand proudly beside our 65,000-strong Ukrainian-American community in this time of international crisis. Oppression, occupation, and threats to democracy unfortunately are not unique in the Ukraine. In the United States, we're in the fight of our lives for voting rights. And here in Cook County, we battle a different kind of oppression. Decades, decades of racist government policy and structural racism. That's why we've committed to using an equity lens, a racial equity lens, in policy and practice. And we've committed to advancing racial equity through the $1 billion that we've received through the American Rescue Plan. Now, as we all know, President Biden proposed and Congress passed the historic American Rescue Plan last year. ARPA, we call it in our day-to-day discussions, is an investment in our local governments and residents that we haven't seen since FDR's New Deal in the 1930s. And that, of course, was 90 years ago. Now, that's saying something. This federal funding allocated $1 billion to Cook County, and it'll help us build sustainable, affordable, and equitable future for our residents. Since the passage of ARPA, we've engaged communities all across the county to share their priorities with us. We issued several large-scale surveys. We conducted door-to-door canvassing with our community partners. And our Cook County Commissioners held town halls to engage their constituents. This has been a massive undertaking. Our plan is the product of countless meetings, thousands of community responses, hundreds of policy ideas, and billions of dollars in proposed initiatives. These ARPA funds will have a transformative effect on the health, safety, and quality of life of our residents in Cook County. Over the next three to five years, we're looking to generate an impact that will last for decades. I'm here today to share some of the ideas that we have on how we're going to spend this billion dollars. But first, I want to share a story with you. I'd like to take us back to just a few months ago, September 27 of last year, to be exact. It's a day that I won't ever forget. It was one of the hottest days of the month, with the temperature reaching nearly 90 degrees. As is often the case, I started the day early and ended it late. One of my meetings was with two chief executive officers in the financial sector. The goal was simple, to make the case for the business community to step up with regard to the ongoing violence plaguing our city and suburbs. I've been having these conversations with members of the business community for months, and I will continue to do so. Later that day, I had a check-in meeting with the Cook County's criminal justice stakeholders. In these meetings, our county officials, the chief judge, the state's attorney, the sheriff, the public defender, the clerk of the court, come together to coordinate the justice system, community safety issues, and ongoing initiatives. I ended the day at Stroger Hospital about 8:00 PM in the evening after taking a moment to thank our emergency workers who were there for all the work that they had been doing during the pandemic. It was a very long day. Our dog, a rescued pit bull named Don, was eager to see me get home, go for a quick walk. I walked inside to change clothes, to get Don ready. Moments later, gunfire erupted. Many of you have heard the rest of this story. Someone attempted to carjack a member of my security detail. While he will say he was just doing his job in foiling the robbery attempt, as far as I'm concerned, he's a hero. He is a hero who also happened to be inches away from becoming yet another victim of gun violence. You know, as president of Cook County, I have the privilege of being assigned a security detail. Our more than 5 million Cook County residents don't have the same privilege. More than 1,000 people in Cook County last year lost their lives to a bullet, actually 1,002, to be exact. I know that everyone in this room is worried about gun violence, carjackings, and other serious crimes. Look, the current surge in violence is not just a local issue, it's a national challenge. There's been a sharp increase in violent crimes in all, all of the 15 largest cities in our country in the last few years. Cities across the country have broken records for homicides in 2021. While leaders throughout the country are grappling with this issue, here's what I know to be true. We need long-term, sustainable solutions to see our way out of rising gun violence. We cannot, we cannot simply police our way to crime-free communities. Take this from a history teacher, fear-mongering and tough-on-crime agendas, while they may sound like action, have always, always failed to sustainably reduce crime rates or build communities that are safer or more resilient in the long term. It's all bark and no bite, folks. And with systematically, systemically racist outcomes, I might add, I'd be remiss if I did not add that the violence that has plagued our Black and Latin communities has gone on for generations. This is not a new challenge for many of us. The challenge was ignored until it affected more of us. Now that the violence has seeped into our downtown and other communities that have not struggled with this challenge historically, we hear a constant stream of news about the violence in Chicago and Cook County on social media, from our local editorial boards, in the national newspapers, and from people on the street. Let me just say, we all deserve safety. Every community deserves safety, not just those communities that are more likely to be visited by tourists, or the ones with high-end shopping and Michelin-starred restaurants. All communities deserve that level of safety. But for communities to be truly safer, we must address the root causes of violence, which include economic insecurity, unaddressed mental health needs, and trauma. That's the Cook County strategy and why we're using our American Rescue Plan funding to immediately increase our violence prevention work. We'll spend $60 million in 2022 alone on a variety of violence prevention and reduction programs, with $50 million going directly to violence prevention work that addresses urgent, short-term needs and longer-term violence reduction efforts. Through the American Rescue Plan Act, we are increasing the amount of community-based grants administered by our Justice Advisory Council, JAC, for services including street-level intervention, mentoring, educational and vocational planning and programming, and behavioral health support. With this new funding, we will build on the violence prevention work that has been ongoing throughout the county, and actually, violence prevention work we've been doing since 2013. We're leveraging evidence-based strategies and programs that reduce instances of gun violence and provide the support needed to address the root causes of violence in our most impacted communities. What's more, we're coordinating with the city of Chicago and the state of Illinois through an intergovernmental municipal working group to help ensure that we maximize the collective impact in the violence prevention space. Some of these efforts have already come to fruition with the Joint Readiness Summit that was held last month. We've even launched a collective hub where nonprofits, community-based organizations, and small businesses, and our residents can find upcoming grant opportunities. Please visit GreaterChicagoTogether.org for more information. That's GreaterChicagoTogether.org. Looking ahead, Cook County will use ARPA funding to study alternative strategies to 911 for people who are experiencing a mental health crisis and develop a strategic plan to launch this alternative system in suburban Cook County. With these funds, we will design an effective and culturally competent response system to address mental health crises that does not involve law enforcement. We're grateful to our partners and advocates who uplifted this need and who are working with us to make this change possible. These programs and others have the potential to meaningfully support our communities across the South and West sides that have suffered from violence for decades, as well as address the rising public safety concerns in all neighborhoods and communities. You know, I often say we have one map in Cook County. Because if you put together a map comparing almost any outcome, whether it's educational attainment, economic status, or life expectancy, you invariably see the same map. That map shows that across the South and West sides of Cook County, the areas that have the highest crime and violence rates are the same communities, the same communities that suffer the most from poverty, have the most under-resourced schools, and have the least access to healthy and affordable food, quality health care, and convenient and reliable public transit. This map is no accident. This map shows that not all are created equal in America. And this map was crafted by my predecessors in government. This map shows you that we are nowhere near the equality in this country that Dr. King challenged us to fight for. This map is why I work every day to advance racial equity, because your zip code should not determine how well you fare in this country. Your race should not dictate how often you are stopped and questioned by the police. Your immigration status should not bar you from accessing education or health care. I think few of us anticipated this pandemic might last into 2022. But you know, we tried to plan for it because our public health experts and our economic advisors told us that this recovery would take at least two years, and frankly, it'll probably take closer to four or five. The deep impact this pandemic has made on us individually and collectively, and the predicted length of the recovery, show why the ARPA investment is so crucial in Cook County. These funds will allow us to continue providing essential services, expand our supports to residents and businesses, and bring these funds to communities across the county. I cannot overstate the importance of listening to our experts, and not just in the health arena. Through wise management, fiscal stewardship, and the leadership of our chief financial officer, Amara Ritzke, who's with us today, we've mostly been able to prevent this public health crisis from turning into a physical crisis for Cook County. By taking a careful and thoughtful approach to our finances with this federal relief, we're working to ensure the largest benefit to the most people over the longest amount of time. I want to especially thank the Cook County Board of Commissioners for working together to pass balanced, responsible budgets that have laid the foundation for the physical health we enjoy today. And I want to thank Commissioner Kevin Morrison for joining us. Some of the $1 billion in federal funding naturally must go to support county operations that have suffered during this pandemic. But we'll still be able to spend more than 70% of our ARPA funding on programs and initiatives that will have a direct impact on our communities, an impact that will last for decades. That means we'll spend at least $700 million on our policy initiatives over the next three to five years, with $320 million allocated in this year, fiscal year 2022 alone. This is unprecedented. Simply put, having our financial house in order means federal money going directly to our residents, to valuable initiatives across the county, like our work to create healthy communities. To improve the physical, mental, and social well-being of Cook County residents and communities, we plan to spend $60 million this year on one of our main policy pillars, health and wellness. I want to pause here to thank the CEO of our health and hospital system, Dr. Israel Rocha, actually, it's Mr. Israel Rocha, and Dr. Joshi and Dr. Rubin, who are co-leads of the Cook County Department of Public Health, for their dedication and leadership during Today, almost one out of every 10 Cook County residents is enrolled in county care, our own Medicaid-managed care program, which serves our most vulnerable residents. More widely, however, in the age of COVID, we also conduct contact tracing, we respond to the opioid crisis, we monitor worker safety, and important programs through the Cook County Department of Public Health, which serves most of suburban Cook County. This pandemic has taken a tremendous toll on our individual and collective mental health. I would bet that everybody in this room has lost somebody at this point. We all have suffered too much grief, too much loss. I don't know about you, but I've attended too many funerals. No one has remained unscathed by the trauma that's been inflicted upon us by the pandemic. And in the midst of this collective trauma, we hear repeatedly from residents throughout Cook County that we need to expand our mental health services. That's why we'll spend $16 million this year on behavioral health services, including vastly increasing staff and mental health support at existing Cook County health clinics. This support will serve as a bridge to meet immediate needs while we create a new Department of Mental Health Services at Cook County Health. And this has the potential to truly change lives. We will also establish innovative partnerships, such as assigning full-time behavioral health specialists to all of the Housing Authority of Cook County affordable housing properties. HAC, the Housing Authority of Cook County, serves some of the county's most marginalized and isolated residents, and this will allow us to bring mental health services directly to them. I want to thank Rick Monacchio, who's here, for his good work at HAC. Because Cook County is taking a holistic approach to recovery, this vast expansion of mental health services is also part of how we are working to make our communities safer. Much of the violence that afflicts our communities results from an enduring cycle of trauma. Survivors of violence need affordable, accessible mental health treatment in order to recover and break the cycle of trauma. And that's only after being treated for the injuries at our trauma unit at Cook County Health, which unfortunately has become one of the nation's experts in treating wounds from gun violence. So ironically, Cook County Health and our trauma center actually trains the military to treat wounds from gun violence. We have a partnership with the Navy that helps their medical personnel learn how to treat gunshot wounds. Think about that for a minute. I often say that regions with the least inequality perform the best economically. But it's also true of violence, regions with the least inequality, with the least poverty, and with the least segregation have the lowest rates of gun violence. And that's no accident. That's why our holistic approach to addressing the root causes of violence includes economic and community development. We must make sure that workers can earn a living wage, afford a home, and access affordable health care whenever they need it. Across the South and West sides, especially in the South suburbs, we've made economic and community development a priority in my administration, something Cook County had never done before. Building wealth in the South suburbs will help the entire region to thrive. It'll help heal decades of pain from racist policies that created the map. With this ARPA funding, we're investing $100 million in economic and community development this year. That includes $37 million to advancing our small business agenda with our grant program and our vast network of technical assistance. We will also devote $28 million toward housing assistance and social services. I'm especially excited to announce that Cook County will use ARPA funds to launch a guaranteed income pilot program. With $42 million set aside for it, this will be an incredible pilot. We'll launch the largest guaranteed income pilot in the nation as of today, and we'll structure it to sustainably transition into a permanent program in the years to come. While we're still ironing out the details, this program builds on the incredibly effective cash assistance program we launched in the fall of 2020 as part of our suite of programs through the Bureau of Economic Development's Community Recovery Initiative. Initially capped at $2 million, we ended up quadrupling our investment in cash assistance to meet the overwhelming need. The program served almost 14,000 households, 80% were in communities of color. And the impact was immediate. Residents told us that they used a $600 payment to pay utility bills, buy groceries, make their rent payment, and even purchase back-to-school supplies for their children. As with housing assistance and other COVID relief programs, this cash assistance program was available to all residents regardless of their immigration status. We also ensured that our COVID-19 programs were accessible in Spanish and other major languages spoken in Cook County. James Baldwin famously said, "Anyone who has ever struggled with poverty knows how extremely expensive it is to be poor." Fueled by racist stereotypes, our government has not traditionally trusted people living in poverty enough to allow them the freedom to make independent choices about the best ways to manage their finances, even when all, all of the evidence tells us that low-income families spend cash benefits wisely. Instead, we choose to make it difficult to apply for and stay on public assistance programs. Just look at how difficult it is to access and use food stamps, or the lengthy application and supporting documents you must submit to receive housing assistance. This cynical mindset gets us nowhere and raises the question, how will government ever regain public trust if we don't trust our residents in return? I find it quite sensible to give people what they need most when they're living in poverty, money. In addition to being logical, pilot programs across the country are proving that guaranteed income offers tangible results, helping recipients create economic stability and improving their health and education outcomes, as well as creating safer communities with lower rates of crime and violence. I am heartened that guaranteed income has become part of our mainstream public policy discussion. Even though it's not a new idea, we should remember the writings of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who became a strong advocate for guaranteed income during the final years of his life 60 years ago. His vision may finally someday become a reality, and I'm proud that Cook County will help lead the way with one of the largest public investments in guaranteed income to date. This lack of economic security also intersects with issues around housing. We know many of our residents have struggled with mounting debt and making rental or mortgage payments during the pandemic. That's why we launched Cook County Legal Aid for Housing and Debt, or CLAD, in partnership with the Chicago Bar Foundation, the Office of the Chief Judge, and many others. This program helps renters, landlords, homeowners, and people facing consumer debt so that folks can proactively resolve housing and debt issues. The goal is to get resources, like legal aid and financial assistance, to those who need it most before and during the court process so that everyone comes out whole and stably housed whenever possible. and stably housed whenever possible. This program, combined with over $100 million in emergency housing assistance administered by the Housing Authority of Cook County and our Bureau of Economic Development, has received national attention for its innovative approach to eviction prevention and housing stability. CLAD has helped over 15,000 suburban Cook County residents to date, and this strategy has undoubtedly been an essential part of preventing the tsunami of evictions and foreclosures experts predicted would happen as a result of the pandemic. I'd like to thank my fellow county officials and many community partners who provided resources and their expertise for this effort. Building upon that groundwork, we've also been able to launch an ambitious new program to abolish medical debt using the ARPA funds. Cook County will partner with a qualified not-for-profit to purchase and retire the debt of Cook County residents who are unable to cover their medical bills. By purchasing the debt at a discounted rate, for pennies on the dollar essentially, we'll abolish up to $1 billion in medical debt for residents while spending only $12 million. Medical debt, much like economic insecurity, housing instability, and other factors I've mentioned before, predominantly affects people of color, working families, and hourly workers. This program will have an enormous impact on racial equity in Cook County, and I'm looking forward to sharing more as we work to develop and launch it in the coming months. We will be the first local government in the country to launch such a program, and I hope we won't be the last. That means with just this one program, for only $12 million, we could potentially see a return on investment equal to the entire amount given to us by the federal government. And we can't even estimate the return on investment of our other programs in dollars just yet, but we know that it will be historic, and it will last for decades. Today, I focused on several of our most urgent priorities: addressing the root causes of violence, bringing mental health resources to our residents, and economic justice. But these are just a handful of the over 80 initiatives we plan to launch in the next few years. Others include water affordability, lead pipe replacement, climate resiliency plans, expanding the forest preserve footprint, and advancing digital equity, just to name a few. I encourage you to learn more by looking through the American Rescue Plan Act at a glance, which we provided each guest today. I think it's at your table. For those watching at home, please visit our website, EngageCookCounty.com, for a comprehensive list of all of the work to come. We know this is challenging, daunting work, and I want to acknowledge that our plans are ambitious. They seek to address complex systemic issues, such as crime and violence, health, and economic inequality. With this historic $1 billion, we can do great things, and it's my hope that we can finally change the map. When people ask me why I'm running for reelection, I often joke that I'm a glutton for punishment. Campaigns are grueling, the days are long, we're facing a lot of challenges in Cook County, but my resolve to continue this work is stronger than ever. This is a job I love, and I can't imagine doing anything else. I look forward to what we can accomplish over the next four years, especially with this extraordinary opportunity to invest in our communities with ARPA funding and ensure that government works for our residents. I look forward to working with each of you, our civic and business leaders, our many community partners across the region, and our elected officials to build a better and stronger Cook County. I'd like to again acknowledge and thank our Cook County Commissioners for collaborating on this ambitious work. I'd also like to thank all my staff and all of my bureau chiefs who are here today. In fact, please stand up. But I would especially like to thank my chief of staff, you could stand up, yes. But I would especially like to thank my chief of staff, Lynetta Haynes Turner, who makes my job much, much easier, my chief financial officer, Amara Ritzky, and my director of policy, Mara Henigan, for managing the planning work. Last but not least, thanks to my communications team, Nick Shields, Director of Communications, Nick Methoudis, our press secretary, Alex Ensign, who wrote most of this speech, Brady Chalmers, Kara, you don't think I actually wrote it myself, right? And Hannah Fearley, thank you all.
Commissioner Kevin Morrison reminds me of an act of unintended omission on my part. Kim Dubuclay, who is a Water Reclamation District Commissioner who's here with us, thank you, Kim, for joining us.
All right, thank you very much. We have a few questions. Just a note, a reminder, when you leave, there will be a takeaway lunch bag for everybody, so don't forget that. And also on your tables, you should have question forms. So if you do have a question, please fill out the form, and our staff will collect it, okay? Just raise your hand when you're done. In the meantime, we have a few questions that came in online. Hillary Farrell from Urban Eden, Inc., "Are you content, President Preckwinkle, with the overall involvement of the CCLB?", which I'm not sure what that stands for.
Thank you. Okay, so those of you who are not familiar with all the county acronyms, CCLB is the Cook County Land Bank. And the Cook County Land Bank is able to acquire properties, sometimes donated to the land bank by financial institutions or others, and sometimes acquiring property, most often acquiring properties in the tax sale for subsequent redevelopment. And I am very grateful to them for the good work they do. We recently celebrated the 1,000th, 1,000th House, I got that right, TH at the end, 1,000th House that was renovated and rehabilitated and sold to community residents in Cook County as a result of their good work. And they've developed a cadre, a team of small, local developers who do this work, particularly in black and brown neighborhoods, and I'm very grateful to them for that.
All right, another couple from online. Kenneth Hill from Chicago Pre-Colleges Science and Engineering Program asks, "Do you think there is a connection between the more than 1,000 homicides in Cook County and under-resourced
The short answer is, of course. So I'm a teacher by profession, and unfortunately, in this country, the quality of education you receive is pretty much determined by the income of the community in which you live. You know, the most money gets spent on our most privileged kids on a per-student basis, right? And the least on the kids who have the most challenges. And that's partly because we fund our schools, in Illinois anyway, through property taxes. But it's partly a reflection of the broader endemic racism and insensitivity to inequality that's plagued us forever.
Meha Singh from the Chicago Department of Public Health, "Early in your career, how did you get involved with economic development policy and practice?"
Okay, so most of you know that I'm a high school history teacher by profession. I always say I'm a history teacher with a temp job. Between ending my teaching career and being elected alderman, I did a bunch of different stuff. Among the things that I did was work for the, what was at the time, the Chicago Department of Economic Development. And that was a great education, and introduced me not only to the network of community and economic development providers and advocates in Chicago, but also to a new area of interest and expertise on my part. So history teaching is one part of my background. I worked at the Department of Economic Development for the city of Chicago, and I also worked for the Chicago Jobs Council, which is an organization that advocates for employment training investments in our population and works with people who are looking for jobs and employers that are looking to fill jobs. So I ended up, before I got elected alderman in 1991, with a kind of interesting background. And then, of course, a lot of the work that I had to do was around housing development, about which I knew nothing, so.
Okay. Question from Hardik Butt of SDI Presence, "Economic opportunities are critical to address the root cause of violence, which is poverty. What can businesses in this room today do to create opportunities?"
Well, I guess I would add one thing. I mean, clearly, poverty has a tremendous impact on the levels of violence in a community, but so does trauma and unaddressed trauma. And so we're making significant investments in behavioral health, mental health services, and trying to address inequality. And a lot of that, of course, is income inequality. So that's our focus. You know, let me say, I've been troubled for quite some time. And when I talked in my speech about meeting with business leaders, I started doing that last May because I knew we were going to see another troubling summer of murders and gunshots, victims. And what I've been trying to do is talk to people in the business community about stepping up. You know, I think the business community's kind of been on the sidelines, you know? We face these tremendous challenges around violence, and clearly, government has responsibility. And the philanthropic community has stepped up, led by the Chicago Community Trust, MacArthur and Joyce, there's the Partnership for Safe and Peaceful Communities that has looked to the communities of 12 or 15 communities in the city of Chicago that have the highest levels of violence and tried to pour resources into them to address that issue. The business community has been remarkably silent. And actually, I had a meeting recently with somebody in this room about this subject, David Gupta, thank you for standing up on this issue. The business community has to say, "The violence is a problem for us. It's not just government, it's not just philanthropy." Business community has to step up and say, you know, if Chicago around the country, if Cook County around the country has a reputation for being a violent place, who's going to want to come here and work? Who's going to want to bring their business here? Who's going to want to expand their business here? Right? So this is a problem for the business community, not just government and not just philanthropy. And so where are our business leaders who are standing up and saying that and calling on the business community to help us address the violence in the ways that are available to them? I mean, you know, when I started last May, I had a more narrow view of this, and I thought, well, if I could just get the business community to hire our kids and keep them off the street and give them something productive to do, I won't say where I went. Let's just say I didn't have any luck in persuading people that that was something that they ought to take on as their challenge, right? But I'm continuing to meet with folks, and I'm hopeful that we will eventually find some champions in the business community who are willing to call their cohorts, their peers, together to help us try to address this challenge.
Thank you for that. It really is incumbent upon everyone. All right, and speaking of philanthropy, Felicia Davis Blakely, Chicago Foundation for Women, in all the initiatives that you've discussed today, where and how do you see the role for philanthropy? You touched a little bit on it, but perhaps you could expand.
You know, I'm very grateful to the philanthropic community because they've stepped up to support violence prevention, anti-recidivism, and restorative justice work for quite some time, and particularly since I think the terrible summer, which until the last two years was the highest number of murders that we had, 2016. They stepped up after that to create what I just referred to, Partnering for Safe and Peaceful Communities, which is an effort across philanthropy and our corporate foundations to support efforts in the communities that have struggled the most with violence. And again, those are the communities that struggle with everything else, too: low life expectancies, under-resourced schools, terrible poverty, and so on. So the philanthropic community has stepped up, philanthropic and foundation community has stepped up, government has clearly increased its support for these kind of initiatives, the city, the county, and the state. But as I said, what's been missing from the puzzle is the third leg of the stool, in my mind, and that is business community involvement. So what the role philanthropy has paid, Partnering for Safe and Peaceful Communities has stepped up big time to try to work on these issues, so thank you.
I think we have one more question from former board member of City Club, Martha Janthow. So we know ARPA is transformational, a billion-dollar infusion. How will initiatives be continued after the ARPA funds end or run out?
Well, that's the challenge for us, how to make transformative investments that aren't a tremendous ongoing burden or responsibility, depending on how you look at it, to Cook County taxpayers. And so that's the challenge for us. We've got a finite timeframe. The money has to be allocated in three years and spent in five, so we have basically till 2026 to spend all the money. And how are we going to do it in a way that has impact and doesn't require tremendous ongoing support from our taxpayers? To be determined. We're working it out.
That's good. Okay, I don't see any other questions for our speaker today, so before we adjourn, we have a couple of things we have to do. Don't look. Oh. Oh, it is a question? All right, happy to take it. Okay. We have another comment question from Meha Singh from the Chicago Department of Public Health. President Preckwinkle, thank you for your presentation. Thanks for discussing the intersection of economics and healthcare, I guess, related to COVID-19. Could you please discuss some of the six-month-to-one-year job opportunities to help Cook County residents, the ones that are most marginalized? What are the current opportunities out there?
Well, I mean, I guess the first thing I should say is that we're part of the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership, and they have ongoing programs that address the needs both of people looking for work and employers who are looking for employees. They will, they have a huge pool of people who are looking for work, and they'll vet candidates for you if you're an employer, if you're looking for people with a particular skill set. And of course, for our folks who are looking for work, they provide training, they provide vouchers for training, they work with a variety of community-based organizations across the entire city and county that do this work. So I'd say immediately, it's the Chicago Cook Workforce Partnership. And over the longer term, our Bureau of Economic Development, led by Socie Flores, will be working to develop additional programs that complement the work of the partnership. Pardon me? Oh, yes, Cook County Government's hiring people, so. Yes, so we have to spend $1 billion, and oddly enough, you've got to hire people to help you do that, so. Lynetta's prompting me here. So we need people in particular in human resources, in finance, in technology, I mean, we need people, economic development, we need people everywhere across the Office of the President, but those in particular. So if you have people that you'd like to recommend, Lynetta's right there, you can see her. [applause]